And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in our business meeting this January 28th, 2016. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Kup, to take the role.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Stephen Madcor, our county counsel, and Mary Rathke, clerk to the board. So Commissioner Bernard, here.
Commissioner Smith? Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, we always try to make it the first order, and that is citizen communication. We have a card from John Hickey.
I'm here to speak about the vehicle registration fee or possible increase in the vehicle registration fee to better fund our road maintenance. There are a couple of points I want to make, the first being that somewhat obvious point, our roads are absolutely vital to our economy. Everything in our homes, everything in our stores got there over the roads. Just about everybody gets to work over the roads. And despite being absolutely vital to our economy, there's insufficient funding for our road maintenance. We just can't continue to rely on dwindling federal and state gas tax revenue to fund our road maintenance program. As a county, I believe that we have to step up and better fund our road maintenance program. And I believe we need to do that for the same exact reason homeowners should perform home maintenance. The longer we wait, the more complicated and costly the fix. Right now, we have this extremely valuable asset that's vital to our economy, that everybody uses almost every day. And anyone who has honestly looked at the issue would say it has insufficient funding. It's deteriorating. If we leave it for our kids, it will cost them more to maintain and fix. And, you know, I look at it as, it's not really a matter of whether we fund our road maintenance, it's a matter of when and how much, right? We will, all of us, whether through federal gas taxes, state gas taxes, local fees, we will have to fund our road maintenance. We can do it now for less, or we can wait and spend more down the road. And it won't be long before all of us are paying more in vehicle maintenance and repair costs. You know, it's guaranteed that a trip to the mechanic or a trip to the tire store will cost more than $25. And so I'm just here to voice my opinion on the issue, and I ask each one of you individually to think about the issue and support an increase in the vehicle registration fee.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
You still have some time left, but you can have it if you want. This week, we floated an idea about an advisory vote in May with a true vote in November. And I'm kind of of the assumption that a lot of people aren't going to be paying attention to our education advocacy efforts until they're forced to vote on something. And we floated a $25 fee, a temporary fee to expire in seven years, and we have about 47 projects in the county that we can pay. Do you support that?
Actually, in terms of how the government works and voting on issues, I don't know the ins and outs of how things can be done within Clackamas County. However, I would say putting it out to the voters and asking them, "Do you want to pay more?", I think would be a mistake. Because I think the chances are, as a whole, as we've seen in the federal government, it will be very difficult to pass that sort of an increase just by voting. I think if you people representing the public look at the issue and honestly believe that we need to spend more, that passing it via the commission or increasing the fee that way would be a better, more streamlined option. Because I think it's a hard thing to understand as a public as a whole, which is, if we wait, you will be spending more in the future.
Well, when you have a vehicle registration fee, you have to collect the fees before you can actually do the work. $25 to some people isn't a lot of money. It brings us $5 million. How much does it bring us a year?
That's $5 million, the city's about $3 million.
$5 million a year, over seven years is $35 million. So you could say that it's not a huge, huge amount to start making a dent. It's not the full amount that we need. So we think this incremental approach, some of us anyway, think this incremental approach would be more palable to the voters. Just a thought. But thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I know just for yourself and the people that are watching this, let you know, just on Tuesday night, I believe, I went back and looked at all the meetings that we've had, discussions we've had, just on our Tuesday work sessions, just on Tuesdays in the last two and a half years, we've discussed this 19 times. It's been on the agenda 19 times over two and a half years. That's almost, almost every month, or every two months, if you think about it. So it's on the peak of our mind, and, you know, this morning's discussion with our legislators, it's been discussed. Almost every meeting I've been at this week has been on transportation funding and the week before. And so it's on the forefront of a lot of our minds. We started this project, actually discussing this, five years ago at our coordinate committee with all our cities, because the cities are involved in this, because we need support. We need support from all the groups, potential opposition groups, people that, you know, they recognize there's a problem. What is the shortfall exactly? You know, there's a lot of details. Without getting in the weeds on this, you know, we're trying to find a way that we don't get an opposition force to battle that or refer that to the voters. And we've had that happen three times in a row on different issues. And, well, actually, one, the first one was the Selwood Bridge, which was a VRF, and there was a petition circulated, and they prevailed. And so we can't, you know, we have to work with them, and I think they'll work with us. So that's been the effort we need to do, and it is urgent to see that our investment. So I've been an advocate for the last two years of trying to take some monies and putting it towards roads, or internally appropriating monies where we can legally can do that. So two years ago, in our budget, we put $500,000 in, you know, knowing there's a 10 to 1 benefit if it's applied properly. So for every $500,000, we get a $5 million reduction, and that's what we're claiming, a 10 to 1 benefit by taking care of some of those things first. Last year, we put a million more, that's a million point 5. Staff within that gas tax money shifted some of their resources around and put about $3.5 million towards service treatments to get, again, to gain that 10 to 1 advantage. So that's $5 million last year that we did internally. So we are trying to make those adjustments and trying to do them responsibly. And so I'm glad this is that, you know, a topic, and I appreciate you coming in and voicing it. And like I said, we just need to get, we have a plan that we approved two weeks ago. I'm not sure where we are going to be as far as implementing that plan, because it was a plan that would come back in June, I think, with an assessment, and we're now perhaps toying with the idea of a May ballot, which would precede that. So can we do that? And I'm, you know, and I made a motion last week to put it on the ballot, only because I've heard from some of the people that were part of that last VRF attempt, that said, you know, "We're willing to support it, but you need to involve us." And so it's a very delicate thing to make sure that they're on board.
Thank you. You know, while we're on the subject, I think it's appropriate to say, Pamplin came out with a newspaper report about, about public perception, you know, and you seem to be cognizant of the fact that we do, we honestly swear that our roads are in disrepair, 50% are in poor or fair condition. So, you know, we're not going to be working on the ones that are fine, we're going to be working on the ones that are hurting, and like you said, would cost a heck of a lot more to rebuild later. But they said that, and this is rightfully so, they said in surveys, backback surveys in 2014, 2015, that in the following year, in 2015, that people thought by a higher margin that the roads were in better shape than the previous survey. Unfortunately, they took that off a staff report that was issued last March, and that is incorrect. In fact, the results from comparable surveys, telephone surveys conducted in '14 and '15 show a decline in the percentage of respondents who believe the roads are in good or excellent shape. So in short, the scientific poll conducted in 2014 showed 71% of residents believing the roads are in good or excellent condition, and a scientific poll conducted in 2015 actually dropped by a percent. But, you know, sooner or later, we'll get this stuff right, but the bottom line is perceptions. And like Tootie often says, perceptions become reality. And so the reality is that we have roads that are suffering, and we're trying to prove that to people, and we're trying to coalesce a group that would agree with that, and a vehicle, so to speak, of how to collect more money for roads. And now, you know, municipalities tend to send things out to the voters that sound like a tax. It sounds like they're taking money from them. But if you look at, right now, the legislature, when the Gang of Eight put forth a proposal last year, they're coming forward with it this year. Now, this is Trimest, who gets the benefit of this. They've never before had an employee tax. Now, there's only enough, a certain amount of room for money to come into municipalities or organizations. Now, here's Trimest, who went out in 2010 to the voters, and the voters said, "No." Now they're bypassing the voters and going to the legislature, and their proposal, just on employee, this is just the employee tax, anybody making $34,000 would pay $63 a year. And we're talking about 25 here. If you make $55,000, it'd be 104 a year to pay for transit. And this is beyond the employer tax. And if you made 115,000, it'd be $217 a year. I emphasize, we're asking for 25. And we've got a specific list about where that money will be spent, and as Tootie said, it's sunsetted in seven years. Commissioner Savis? You didn't have your light on?
Yeah, I do have my light on. So the, you know, the idea we had, because of what the chair cited earlier on, that the people are 71% or 70% think our roads are just fine, you know, part of the idea that I threw out last year and this year, and even last week, was, well, if we put it on the ballot, people, the people that have seemed to think that our roads are just fine are going to read on the ballot that the roads are not fine, right? It's going to be very clear to them in the language that we have a problem. And I thought, if nothing else, it's an education piece. And frankly, it could be done cheaper than it would be our outreach effort, because we only moved the needle 1% in this case, and we spent 150-some-odd thousand dollars, and we only gained 1% more awareness. I'm kind of wondering if it's on the ballot, if they're not going to be keenly aware then that we actually do have a problem. So it's, I'm looking at it as an education piece, and that's perhaps why I think the advisory thing is a good idea. I am, as far as what the chair last spoke about, you know, I'm trying to find out where that language is, and the only thing I could find from talking to Representative John Davis this morning about that, because that came up Tuesday as well, this Trimest tax, that was a proposal that was part of a Senate bill which died, and followed by a House bill that he had been part of, which didn't contain that. So I think that was a very short-lived thing, but John, if you've got more information about that, something more recent?
This is from Chris Lyons. This is a bill that Senator Courtney is pushing, is similar to the Gang of Eight, not Nine, that tried at the last legislative session. So this is straight from our lobbyists, it says, "This is a bill from Senator Courtney."
For this session?
There will be a tran-
I have to talk to him, Paul.
From what I understand, there will be a transportation package proposed this session. The chances of it passing are extremely low, possibly in 2017. On your point, and your point of the 71% think the roads are fine of the general public, if that was a poll of engineers, it would be zero. Zero. The right answer, the right answer is the roads are not fine. We all know that. And whether or not it's a matter of educating the public or just doing the right thing, my view is, we just need to do the right thing. But I understand there are other concerns that you folks may have.
You had said, I think, along the early part of this, that you think we should just enact this $25.
Yeah, I do.
And Commissioner Bernard wishes to speak of that.
I agree with you. There's a way to do it. Milwaukee did it, and I'm going to look back to that history a little bit, and we started with a package, which I think is key. How much money we wanted, I like the length of time, seven years, that's a good start. Then we go back, and people say, "Yeah, your roads are better, I'll keep supporting this in the future." But what we did is, we took that package, and then we went to the community. We had hearings, we did some outreach at various events, farmers' markets and stuff. And when we got to the last meeting, one person came, and that was a gas station owner. This was, it used to be you could enact gas tax citywide, but now you can't. That has to be on the ballot. This is one thing we can do. And if you think about it, it's $175 over seven years. That is not much money. And I just don't see why we wouldn't just go through that process and get to that hearing and, you know, Paul's mentioned there are people who are willing to battle. Let's sit down with them. And John's mentioned that too. Let's sit down with them and find out what we could do to get them on our side. And maybe that is just educating them. The last time this was proposed was the Selwood Bridge, $5, which most people can't believe we didn't do. But the thing people said is, "If this money's spent in Clackamas County, we will be there to support you." This money's going to be spent in Clackamas County, and I expect that they'll be able to support us. Les Poole, you know, you can't always say whether what Les Poole is supporting or not, someone to be careful, seemed interested in the idea. But, you know, you're right, we have a responsibility to our children and grandchildren to do what's right now while it's affordable. I remember one water budget committee on raising the price of sewer service, $1. One guy, one of the board members cried. He was so upset that it wasn't more, because his kids would have to pay for it, you know? And if you think about it, our social security benefits, which we worked hard for, there's not enough of, our children are going to be working to supplement that social security system, to keep it stable into the future. Let's do the same for them today and invest in the infrastructure that's important today, so that they can continue working to supplement our social security.
I agree.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming today. And now, Lori Friedman Swanson.
Hi, how are you? Good morning, everyone. I'm here, just, I'll do this briefly, to speak to the Canby Fairgrounds, one of the other gems in our county, I think. We have an opportunity right now to really move forward and move forward with a bigger idea in terms of the fairgrounds, I believe. The building that was torn down, as you know, was a one-dimensional use, and I think there's a great opportunity to develop a plan and add a building that is a multi-use building that would be able to handle dogs and horses and flowers and concerts, and I always get the initial, you know, with the bicycles that jump, the B-
BMX.
There we go. That, many other things. And I think the fact that we have the other two buildings there, which is a smaller, open-sided building, and then the arena, the other, the arena that is there now, the planning in terms of partnering those buildings would be the very important part of it. I'm speaking from the horse end of it. I've been in horses all my life, and competed throughout the United States and Canada, and taken clients a lot of different places, and raised horses and blah, blah, a lot of stuff. And what I can say to you is that I think that larger horse events would like, their favorite thing is to have more than one arena, and then perhaps another arena that's a warm-up arena. This is hunter jumper people. It also would be the same, I think, for some of the other disciplines in terms of wanting another arena, a smaller arena for a warm-up, which would be, you know, maybe that smaller, open-sided building, maybe just made a little bigger or something, you know? I mean, that's, there's a million ideas. Let me look here and see what it is. And also, I want to talk, mention to you that oftentimes, most of the time, when managers come in for shows, they rent portable stalls. So I don't think the county really needs to think about, you know, "Oh, if we do this, are we going to have to have buildings with a million stalls in them?" They can rent portable stalls, and they can be outside on open ground. They don't necessarily need to be in a covered, in a roof situation. There's two things that I would like to just throw out to you-
Go ahead.
-and then I'll quit, to think about when you're contemplating this thing. One of them, I think, the two really important ones to me, one would be to create an advisory committee that's made up of professional horsemen and horse trainers. The people that compete today, again, they travel, many of them travel throughout the United States and Canada, and some to Europe, and they are in a lot of facilities, old, new, state-of-the-art, whatever, a mix of things. And Olympics, they go to Olympics. And so they have viewed, you know, and worked with a lot of facilities, so they have ideas about that. Include some horse show managers, so they can speak to what works for them. Anyway, try to get a very meaty kind of a committee that can inform folks to help you make decisions about money. The other thing I will say is, at the top of the list, in my view, when considering this, is footing. And the footing that you put in these arenas, I'm assuming there'll be two arenas, I'm thinking forward, but the footing you put in those two arenas says who wants to come to and be there at that place. I think there's property around the fairgrounds that is something that perhaps there might be some thing that might develop in terms of a motel or a restaurant, or, you know, the whole thing could be quite nice, and that's all I have to say. Oh, wait, yes, I did it, I said it all.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, thank you, Lori, for bringing this up, and this is not that dissimilar from the conversation we just had about roads. It was, you know, I had been at several events and been in the livestock building before it was torn down, and it was torn down because of lack of maintenance, disrepair, and dilapidated to some degree, and it's raised. So in essence, we're homeless, right? And we're using a tent. So here we now, we have our livestock building and a tent. But, you know, as, and I said at the fairgrounds, when we had our meeting in August at the fairgrounds, where there we are, facing in front of us was the, was the tent, and we don't have a solution yet. So there's another funding situation that we need to resolve, and there is a fair board, and I've been trying to get some input as to how we're doing with that. But being here five years, it feels just like the roads. I've been here five years, it seems we just keep on kicking the can, and there's not a plan to take care of some of our facilities, and that's, I'm only, that's just two, there's several issues where we have lack of funding, where we need to address it, our museums, that's another one. So we, you know, I'm, that's why I'm trying to find ways of prioritizing, you know, new revenues we get every year from taxes, and how can we help those things along and make traction. But five years of doing the same thing, which is nothing, in essence, at least from the perspective of the, from the citizens, we know we're doing, trying to do something. But it's just not good enough. We really need to, we really need to advance this.
Yes. And I think I see, I certainly understand that. But I also see in terms of thinking, considering the idea of forming a committee that is made up of the people that I spoke about, gives you current information. And current, you're dealing with people that are competing currently, and I think, to me, that's the big word here. And I think, also, I've heard people talk to me about various forms of funding, you know, I think that the funding could get kind of creative in some respects, so I'm just pointing that out.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Lori, thank you for coming. I like your idea of the advisory committee, although I would expand it beyond horse people.
Yes.
If we're going to put a lot of money into a building, and the price tag, I believe, starts at a million dollars, is nothing. You know, we need to make it multi-purpose, and that's what this board is struggling with. We really haven't had a proposal brought for, to us at this point. I would think the fair board needs to really start digging down and figuring out what they want to do, and maybe combine some folks on the fair board with an advisory committee of multifaceted business interests throughout the county or beyond, and try to come up with a solution. Doing nothing is not a solution, we know that. And here we're going to be looking at our second fair pretty soon with another tent, and yet no plan. And that's really not where I was hoping we'd be at this point. So we are a little bit constrained by the state law that says we have a governing fair board. So at this point, there's a lot of conversations that need to happen, and maybe you can be a part of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, people seem to forget that we just went through a really bad economy. It's not like we could be doing a lot.
Right.
And certainly, we don't want to tax the property, I mean, property owners more than they need, I mean, than they can afford, or, and that's already a perception that exists. But what I'm interested in is a business plan. I've always agreed with you. There should be an opportunity for concerts, there's a huge, car shows, all kinds of opportunities. And there are a lot of people who do this stuff, so find out what kind of revenue they get, create a business plan. The SBA, Small Business Administration, offers business plans, will work with you to create a business plan, figure out what revenue, and then you bond it. And then, after you do that, then you start talking about district. There could be a one cent is $1 million, a revenue for the county, so 1, 2, 3, whatever, and maybe that's not the way you ever go, because the theory is, if you create a structure that attracts people and creates revenue, then it will pay the bond and pay for maintenance. And I think that should be the goal. But there's no specific, there are some old plans that need to be updated for the fairgrounds, and I look forward to that discussion too. But a business plan is key, and I haven't seen one yet, and hopefully they're working on it.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, thanks for coming, Lori. It's nice to see you here again. Some institutional memory with this, when I was here the first time, we were touring that barn, seeing that it had issues and that it needed to be repaired or torn down. At the time, the fair board was raising money to build a new barn, and I don't know where that money is, I'm assuming it is in a trust somewhere. So there had been a plan to replace the barn, but getting the dollars to do it. Then there was also a study done, I think it was by Tourism, that looked at the facilities, looked at making it more of an event center, and actually looking at the fact that there are heritage buildings on that site, because it is over 100 years old, it's a historic site for the fair. And there are multiple buildings there that are of national trust for historic presence- And there are multiple buildings there that are of national trust for historic preservation significance. And the suggestion was that the folks go after that designation and leverage that designation with funds for rehabilitation and for basically rehabbing the buildings and also maintaining the character of the area. I, I don't know, it is difficult because the fair board is their own governing board and those ideas seem to not resonate with those folks in a way that I had hoped because I, I would like to see those facilities. Again, the barn's gone. I've got an old window from it that I kept. It was sad to see it go. So that's, but there's some other buildings there, including the pavilion, as well as the four-H Center that are of significant historic.
Yes, I agree.
You know, they're, I mean, they're there and they should be, they should be preserved. And I personally don't think, having restored an old barn and an old historic home and having owned a property that was on the National Register, I don't think it's going to be any more expensive necessarily. So somewhere, that study is on a shelf, somewhere. I think Danielle, I think Danielle would, would know where that is. And it might be, it might be a good idea to kind of at least resurrect that and take a look at it as we move forward with the facilities, so.
Well, you got us juices going today, didn't you, Lori?
That's what, that's why I'm here. That's what I, that's what I wanted to do.
Well, Jim used to sit on the, Jim used to sit on the fair board and I do now. And they, the fair board is very cognizant of their opportunities and the condition of their property. But it always takes money. That's the bottom line. You know, how much? And like Jim says, you know, bond, and usually that'd be a revenue bond, which means we better know that our revenue is coming in. So, you know, every year, we wrestle with this thing. We've got Parrot Creek Ranch that needs help. We've got the fairgrounds that need help. We've got our roads that need help. There's always asks out there. And, but we are very concerned with the continued deterioration of our fairgrounds. So we'll be working on that here in the next year or so and see what we come up with. Thank you very much for coming today.
You're welcome. I just think it's a wonderful piece of property with the city surrounding it that way. It's very unique, I think. And on an everyday basis, I think that the cities around Canby are growing towards Canby in terms of how accessible it is and that kind of thing. And, you know, and I think it's accessible enough from the freeways for people coming from Canada and Washington and California to, you know, be able to hop off and, and get right to the facility with rigs, big rigs and stuff, so.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. And now, Mr. Crepp, we have, I've got my agenda out here. We have a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have a public hearing to consider a request for an exemption and authorization to use the request for proposals method for the repair or replacement of the Clackamas River Water District water line at the Spring Water Road Bridge Project. And Mr. Lane Miller, who is our semi-retired procurement manager, is here to give you a report and recommendation.
Semi.
Semi-retired. Attempted retired, how's that?
That's what it is.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lane Miller, purchasing manager with Clackamas County. As Mr. Crepp said, we're here seeking the authorization to use a request for proposals method for selecting a contractor for the Clackamas River Water District water line on the Clackamas River Bridge at Spring Water Road. In order to use the request for proposal method to solicit for public improvement projects, the Board of Commissioners, acting as the local contract review board, must approve findings of fact that justify the granting of an exemption from the requirement of public contract rules and regulations, which require the use of a traditional bidding process and allow the use of an alternative method. Before final adoption of the findings exempting a contract for a public improvement from the requirement of competitive bidding, a public agency is required to hold a public hearing. Notification of the public hearing is to be published in at least one trade newspaper of general state rights circulation, a minimum of 14 days prior to the hearing. An advertisement was placed in the Daily Journal of Commerce on January 13, 2016, notifying interested parties of the draft findings. The advertisement stated that the draft findings were available at the office of the purchasing manager and this public hearing would be held today, January 28, 2016. No comments were received during the 14-day period. This meeting is the last opportunity for receiving comments. If no comments are received that resulted in revision of the draft findings, the board may, at its discretion, adopt these draft findings as the final findings for the exemption at this public hearing. A little bit about the project. In 2011, the county issued a request for proposals to replace the Clackamas River Bridge at Carver. As a result of that process, the county contracted with a contractor to replace the bridge. Part of the project included construction of an 18-inch water line suspended from the bridge. That water line, the water line upon satisfactory completion would become the property of Clackamas River Water District. It's been done, the work was done in cooperation with the water district. As of 2014, the majority of the bridge was completed. A few paving and finishing tests remain unfinished. The primary delay is attributed to the inability of the water line to hold adequate pressure. The county directed the contractor to complete the contract and finish the project, and the contractor claimed that the project could not be completed as designed. The county then retained an independent engineering analysis to review the design and plans that were set forth in 2011. The contractor likewise sought a separate opinion and based on that opinion has declined to complete the project. In consultation with the project design team and independent engineers, the county seeks to retain the services of a qualified pipeline contractor to repair and/or replace the existing water system, a water line, with materials and specifications the same as that were set forth in, in the 2011 project. Additionally, the contractor will be asked to complete the reconstruction of the paving on the bridge approaches once the water line's installed. The water line kind of runs through part of the approaches and any remaining finish work. The water line may repair, may involve removing and replacing the mechanical joint fasteners, the other related structural enhancements. If the repairs aren't viable, a replacement may be necessary. So there's kind of a range of work that, possibilities that go on. And it's one of the reasons we're seeking a proposal, proposals from the contractors, is how they would approach something that varies in that nature. A request for proposal process will allow the county to consider elements in addition to cost of the project to determine the most advantageous offer. Elements will include the contractor's qualification, experience with similar projects, their project understanding and approach, including a detailed project schedule, construction methods, and sequencing, along with references from past projects. These elements will be assigned a weighted value to be, to be assigned to the proposals by an evaluation committee to, to determine the highest rated proposer. The process we're intending to, we're requesting to use would be to publicly advertise a request for proposal. Contractors would submit proposals and it would be evaluated based on their qualifications, experience with similar projects, project understanding and approach, including a project schedule, construction methods and sequencing, references, and cost. Each of those elements will be assigned a weighted value. Evaluation committee will look at the submitted proposals, evaluate them, score them, to determine the highest rated proposer. And that will run through a recommendation process, ultimately coming back to the board for your approval. The statutory test is contained in ORS 279C 335, requires local contract review board to make the following findings as part of authorizing the use of the alternative contracting method. A, that it's unlikely that the exemption will encourage favoritism in the awarding of public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts. And that awarding the public improvement contract under the exemption will result in a substantial cost savings to the contracting agency or public. The A, the first piece of it, the fact that we're advertising, we're going out, we're going to publicly solicit for it, takes care of the favoritism and the competition. The substantial cost savings is very difficult to kind of define at this moment because there's so many moving parts. However, the intention is to save as much money as possible in resolving it. Staff respectfully, oh, these, these findings have been reviewed and approved by county council. And finally, staff respectfully recommends that the Board of Commissioners, acting as the local, local contract review board, consider any comments received from the public on the proposed findings, if any, and we have none, and direct staff to revise the findings if necessary, having none unless the board requests revisions. If no revisions are to be made, and then staff recommends that the board adopt these findings and grant the requested exemption. Does the board have any questions?
Board, you have any questions of the presenter? All right, we're going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the request for an exemption and authorization to use the request for proposal method for the repair and replacement of Clackamas River Water District Line on Clackamas River, on the Clackamas River at Spring, Spring Water Road Bridge Project. I call it Carver.
I'll second that.
It is, as far as we're concerned. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Bernard.
I'd just like to say that I'm starting to, you know, I, some people say they get calls all the time, but I actually got one on the bridge. When is it going to be done? And I had to explain the situation with the water connection. And I look forward to this project being done and people are really, would really be excited to have it done. But there's a downside to this. That means that the footings, we have to dig into the footings, correct, to repair this leak?
I don't know that we actually need to get to the footings. I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is, is the pipe is actually suspended from the bridge deck and the approaches come back up. They don't actually go to the fi, to the footings of the bridge, the bench of the bridge.
Yeah, I guess the approaches.
Yeah.
So the approaches would have to be torn up, meaning the bridge would be shut down for a while. Or reduced.
Possibly, actually, the, the approaches are still barricaded off. And that's when you swing around that wide end on the, on the south side, that's the approach where the water line comes in and coming out the other way.
Okay.
So we've got space to work.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
I, I just want to, I appreciate you, Commissioner Bernard, bringing that up. I wanted to say almost the same thing, but I'll just try and do it a little bit differently. I got approached yesterday, get approached all the time. Why are those orange cones still out there? You know, what's going on? And as you pointed out, Lane, this, this project was hopefully completed in 2014 and then we discovered this issue with the leak. And so for those out there watching, that's what the hangup has been, has been this leaking water line and there's been a contractual issue and how to fix it and responsibilities. And so we find ourselves really trying to just make, pull this together on behalf of the water district to fix this. And it's, it's complex, but that's why those cones are out there and we hope, and we have to dig up that approach in order to do those lines and resuspend this thing and build it and fix it. So that's why we're making this exemption here today and hopefully get that bridge project completed here sometime this year, if we're lucky.
Sometime soon. And, you know, personally, I drive that way to and from work every day. So I've been on that bridge twice a day, every day, coming back and forth. So, yeah, it's becoming, huh, when's it going to be done? When's it going to be done?
We're working on it.
Yep, yep.
Well, this is a legal issue and, you know, certainly, none of us know what caused this leak. And hopefully, in the near future, we'll find that out. But the bottom line is, this really needs to be completed and that's exactly what we're doing by going forward. Any further comments or questions? Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval for a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for the primary care incentive payment model incentive program. Approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services for strengthening, preserving, reunifying families and in-home safety and reunification services. Under our juvenile department, approval of amendment number three with Multnomah County to increase the capacity of the assessment and evaluation beds. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, granting a permanent right-of-way easement for road purposes and a temporary construction easement to Clackamas County Department of Transportation and Development for the 122nd Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project at the Justice Property. And that completes the consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners want to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion. All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, the county administrator has been some places, including not here at our last commission meeting, which I'm sure he'll explain again, and also some traveling. So I assume you're going to talk about said things.
Well, I hadn't, but I, I, I very well can, so. But I, I did want to share some, some good news for you. And as usual, this is good news from our road department, but I'm happy to relay to you a compliment that we received via voicemail about our diligence in responding to a road repair issue. This was from Mary Lundey, who lives on Two's Road. And what Mary said was, "The day before yesterday, I called about a terrible pothole on Graham's Ferry Road. I could hardly believe it, but your folks went out almost immediately and fixed it. Thank you so much. It's a great, wonderful service, as usual, from Clackamas County." So kudos to Randy Harmon and his crew on responding so efficiently and effectively to a customer request. I also learned that Community Solutions for Clackamas County, which provides workforce assistance programs, earned $30,000 in incentive payments from the State Department of Human Services for meeting and exceeding performance goals in the self-sufficiency program. So good work on, on their part. And then with regard to my absence last week, so last Thursday evening, I had the pleasure to be able to attend a work session with the City of Milwaukee City Council. We had received a request from Mayor Gamba to receive a presentation on the county's social, health, and housing services. And so Richard Swift and his management team put together what I thought was an excellent presentation to the Milwaukee City Council about the many things we do in the city of Milwaukee and countywide in the area of supporting citizens with healthcare needs, mental health services, housing needs, and many of the other things we do for citizens throughout the county and in Milwaukee. And it was very well received. I received a number of very nice notes back regarding the, the information and some follow-up requests for some additional numbers which we are providing for the city. My hope is actually that we'll have other opportunities to meet with other city councils to talk about many of the things we do because it's, it's often true, people don't know about the many things that the county does in the way of serving citizens, not just in the unincorporated area, but within cities themselves. And so it's a very helpful thing for us to do, so. Then, of course, on Friday, and maybe you probably add to my remarks about this as well, Chair Ludlow, but we did have an opportunity to actually travel up to my old stomping grounds, Thurston County in Olympia, to, to take it, take an opportunity to visit the, what was referred to as the Accountability and Restitution Center there. And it's, it's their adult correction center, then relatively recently finished and constructed and occupied. And we had an opportunity for representatives from the sheriff's office, county administrator's office, the chair, and the district attorney's office to come and learn about how that was developed, designed, the approach that was undertaken, and the focus on treatment and addressing recidivism concerns there and the successes that they've had with that particular facility underway. So I thought I'd share that also.
Thank you. And now it's time for Commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This week, I attended the first meeting of the task force for a pilot project for urban lumber. Representative Julie Parrish was the sponsor of that bill in Salem. It has passed with a $400,000 allocation to go forward and do some work on planting trees in urban areas that can later be used for furniture, cabinets, all kinds of fun things. This morning at the legislative breakfast, she called it her hippie bill. And I think that's a kind of a good name. I'm referring it, I'm going to my hippie meeting now. I'm referring it, I'm going to my hippie meeting now. Yeah, it'd be kind of fun. Last night was the impact meeting, although no formal business was conducted, they were trying to talk about income characteristics in the four-county region, and we include Clark County in that. And there's an interesting quote here on a handout, and it says, "We call it the economy, but it's so much more. It's our communities, our lives, our opportunities. Here are some things to keep in mind about the Portland regional economy. There are over a million jobs created in the four-county area. Our unemployment rate is at 5.6% in the four-county area. And while we have a lot of high-income jobs, low-income jobs, it's the middle that's very much lacking. And again, we're getting a hit on our middle income, the middle class, not only in America, but here in the region as well." This group also attended the North Clackamas County State of the Cities Luncheon yesterday, with the mayor speaking on the state of their cities, and it was very well-attended. I was very happy at the crowd. They each talked about their own particular needs in their cities, and they didn't beat up on us too badly. Legislative breakfast was this morning over at Eagles Landing at the Aerie Restaurant. We, as commissioners, talked about what our legislative agenda will be in February for the short session, and we also had Clackamas County senators and representatives there to tell us what they hope to accomplish. And it was a very good meeting, and I think we'll be talking together about how we move our county forward. Tomorrow, we have, I have a Willamette Falls Legacy Project Partners Meeting, and I'm looking forward to that immensely. I think we're going to have some good information rollout. I don't think I can talk about it now. It's not public, but we'll bring it to you. Malala Chamber Banquet is Saturday night, and I think several of us are attending that. It's really a fun time out there. You know, folks in Malala know how to have fun. And then on Monday is our Associate Oregon County Meetings in Salem. It's also the first day of the legislative session, so we're going to be working hard on our Board of Directors Meeting and our Legislative Committee that I'm assigned to to figure out how to maneuver through a very, very active legislative session. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
All right, let's pull up our arts and culture activities in the county. And here it comes. So, a room full of teeth in residence at Merrill Hurst University. A Room Full of Teeth is a Grammy-winning vocal project dedicated to mining the expressive potential of the human voice. Friday, January 29th, 7:30 p.m., show and tell at the Art Gym at Merrill Hurst University. And Saturday, January 30th, 7:30 p.m., in concert at St. Anne's Chapel at Merrill Hurst University. Then we have the Sandy Actors Theater, the complete works of William Shakespeare abridged, as it, so is the title somewhat abridged. This marvelous company of seven actors whisked through Romeo and Juliet, Titus Andronicus, Antony and Cleopatra, Macbeth, Julius Caesar, Hamlet, and all the comedies, all 37 plays in 87 minutes. Friday and Saturday, January 29th and 30th, 7:30 p.m., and Sunday, January 31st, 3 p.m. at Sandy Actors Theater. What isn't on this list that I want to mention is, I did have an opportunity to see the Clifford Odette play Golden Boy at Lakewood Center for the Arts this past week. It's about boxing in 1936. It was a fascinating play, very well-done, and so I'm a little biased, because I do sit on that board, so I would recommend if folks really want to see a wonderful play that takes you back to the '30s and the gritty times that were happening then, that would be a good play to go see. For more information about any events, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. So there's my arts update for the week. One of the things I wanted to mention this morning, I was, I came later to the legislative breakfast, because this morning I had an opportunity to speak very briefly at the Clackamas County Manufacturing Reception. And here's some of the information that I shared with folks. There are over 17,000 people employed in the manufacturing sector in Clackamas County. Advanced metals and machinery sector alone account for $695 million in gross domestic product in Clackamas County. And the advanced manufacturing's average annual wage of $79,369 is 58% higher than the regional average, and it provides a variety of career options for folks in our region and in our county. So manufacturing is alive and well in Clackamas County, and I think it's one of the reasons why we continue to look for employment lands here in the county, because you want to build on what you do best, and manufacturing is a key economic sector that we do very, very well in Clackamas County. The next thing I wanted to talk about was Senate Bill 32. This is a bill that actually set up a work group with the Public Utility Commission, and the official mission is to do findings and conclusions regarding access to natural gas infrastructure in unserved areas in Oregon. And why is this important? It's very important to our rural communities. The example I often use is Estacada, that has really available employment land, and the fact that they don't have access to natural gas limits the opportunity for the appropriate development out there. So this is a group of folks with, from the public utilities, PGE, Pacific Power, from the, well, actually, private utilities, the public utility folks, experts in the area, and the Public Utility Commission staff. After the first meeting, I decided I had to go back home and dig out my economics textbook from when I took economics back in the late '80s, because it's very, very complex, how rates are set, how the service is delivered with the infrastructure. And our task is to try and come up with ways to make sure that rural communities have access to this particular infrastructure, so they can grow and thrive. So it's going to be a few more updates as those meetings go on. I'm pretty excited about it, because I like the substance of what we're working with, with energy policy. Very, very interesting. The AOC, Association of Oregon Counties Housing Subcommittee, will be meeting tomorrow in Salem, and that is a group of commissioners. I am co-chairing that group with Commissioner Loretta Smith from Multnomah County. And what we're looking at is, you know, housing across, and affordable housing and workforce housing across the state of Oregon. Our immediate goal, evidently, there is a bill that is being presented by Representative Alyssa Kenny-Geyer. Our immediate goal is to go through that bill and look at it through a county lens, because oftentimes, our well-meaning legislators, if they haven't had county experience and they legislate something, it puts us in a position of implementing policies that may actually have unintended consequences. So we're going to look at that at AOC, and then after this short legislative session, we will probably continue to get best practices codified and given to all of our commissioners from across the entire state of Oregon, because we do believe that rural and urban areas, more than likely, and this is what we're going to tease out, have some differences in how they approach the problem of housing for their folks. And this not only includes people that need affordable housing or low-income housing, but just in general, at this point in time, housing prices and apartment costs, you know, people paying rent for apartments, has risen sky-high and is becoming very problematic for people to afford the kind of housing that they should have and that they should need. And as Commissioner Smith said, in a way, it seems to me, it's hitting the middle class the most. So we're going to take a look at that problem. I will join Commissioner Smith at the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, and she is correct, there's some very wonderful things going on that haven't been made public yet, but I bet we'll both talk about them next week. The last thing I wanted to mention is that Clackamas Workforce Partners, our workforce board here in Clackamas County, received a grant from Kaiser Permanente dealing with how to look through workforce with an equity lens. I was very excited about this, because our county, with our equity person, Emmett Wheatfall, has done quite a bit of work on this, and I asked our administrator and asked my colleagues if we could make sure that we were involved in that discussion, because that is a real area of expertise that would add value to the grant they've got, and will add value to the county as a partnership in making sure that everybody has equal access and equity when they want to go and get a job. Again, I also attended the State of the Cities yesterday. It was, it was very nice to be thanked for a change. Sometimes our relationship with our cities gets a little bumpy, and that happens occasionally, but yesterday, I think we all had a group hug, and that was kind of nice as the peacemaker. I was kind of glad to see that happen. So that's the news from Lake Wobegon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
So, back to Don, what you were talking about, speaking in the city of Milwaukee. You know, most citizen councils are folks that live in a community, decide to step up and run for election. And, I mean, when I ran for mayor, I actually knew very little about what a city did, but I knew nothing about what a county did. And I probably didn't know that until about four years into my eight years. And I learned that because I joined the North Clackamas County Leadership Program, and we actually came up to the county all day one time and learned. So I'm going to tell you something that I don't know that I have since you've been here, or you guys here, and that is an idea I had. It's called speed dating. Now, this is something that I think would be kind of fun, and that is to have a day in the county, maybe it's a day on a Saturday, if necessary, where all the county departments set up a table. And not only would we invite citizens and people who serve on city councils, but we'd also invite staff, because a lot of us don't know what we do. And it might be a great idea to kind of, everybody have an opportunity to sit down and talk with, you know, those departments, the people in those departments, and find out what exactly the county does. And I go back to a veteran that used to sleep behind our library, and I hired him at our farmer's market, so every Sunday, he got a little bit of money. And then eventually, when I got here, I found out that we had not only veteran services, which I knew about, because I had gone to that leadership program, but we also had an opportunity to house him. And that, our H3S department worked hard to find him a place to live, and he did eventually live in one of our places. And the sad part is, it wasn't long, he died of cancer. But not only were they at the hospital for him, I actually participated in making decisions, his life decisions, because he said he had no family, they were all gone. But shortly after, his family came to visit me, and I had saved his wallet and was able to give it to his son. But I never knew the county did any of that stuff, and the citizens don't know what we do. It seems like it'd be a good idea to maybe think about some sort of opportunity for people to really learn what the county does. It'd have to be a big event, and it could cost some money, but it might be pretty fun to do that. Last week, and I mentioned this last Thursday night, about an opportunity that I've, I don't know that I've missed many of them, swearing in promotional ceremony. And, you know, we don't, as a county commission, have anything to say about who is promoted, who's sworn in, and that holds true pretty much for most of the county employees. But one person who was promoted was Chief Deputy Chris Hoy, who I've worked with, well, since I got here. He came a little bit before I did, and I served with him on Community Corrections Commission, and he's always been the backbone of, you know, whenever I have a question, what's happening in public safety, he's the guy I would always go to. So I wanted to just say how excited I am that Chris Hoy has been promoted to Chief Deputy. He has quite a career, and he even has an English minor. Congratulations on that. But he's also got a Bachelor of Science degree, Bachelor of Political Science from Willamette University, great asset to the county. Also, wanted to mention that in the years that I've been here, full employment at the Sheriff's Department occurred for one day, maybe two days, years ago. And we are really close to full employment right now, and I got to thank our folks for all the hard work in all our departments to step up and fill those positions. We have a lot of retirements, so it's like it's a race to keep adequate staffing. I would like to see more folks on the road, boots on the road, and we made some efforts in the budget process over the years to make sure that we had that. I'm going to meet with one of the deputies to talk about boots on the road real soon. So, let's see. Finally, hotly debated, this, the dog. Hotly debated because of what I'm going to say. We should have a hearing on this.
Oh, yeah.
So open a public hearing, should I say this. So this is Gurley. Her wagging tail shows that she loves visitors, she also loves treats, she's an active gal with a bouncy spring in her step. You can take her home for lots of outings, and you will both get a good workout. She will give you doggy kisses in return for tummy rubs. That's the part that was hotly debated. Please visit Gurley today. And also, if you're interested, you can go on our website at www.clackamas.us/dogs, or call Dog Services at 503-655-8628, where there are lots of dogs available for you to take home. So thank you, and have a great weekend.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Thank you. You know, sometimes we, someone will approach and say, "Well, why do you do what you do?" Or, "What do you do as a county commissioner?"
Everything.
And I had to reflect on those questions after I left the meeting on Wednesday night at a local CPO, and the topic, a surprising topic to some degree, there's so much time and so much passion was expressed, and opposing viewpoints was surrounded around libraries, particularly the library situation in the Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge, Gladstone issue, and just a lot of different viewpoints. But in last night, there was a meeting that I couldn't attend, I had a conflict about our parks and the future of parks. And we've had some passionate testimony today about our fairgrounds and our roads and a lot of our infrastructure. And, you know, and so part of the why and part of the what of what we do as commissioners is really about trying to bring value and closure and maintenance and addressing the very fundamental needs of what government really provides to our citizenry. You know, we do, we talked about social services, we talk about public safety, we have a lot of responsibilities, and often cited is our, the little green-blue-red sheet from the AOC, Association of Counties, of what our statutory responsibilities are. And that's kind of, it's just part of what we do. But, you know, we have a lot of citizens, we have a lot of advisory committees, we only have over 75, what we call ABCs, Advisory Boards of Commissions, that those people are, just happen to be passionate about, again, parks, libraries, whatever it may be. And, you know, in Jim's idea about the speed dating, I think to some degree, we need to kind of re-associate ourselves with those citizens committees at some point. We need to have a rotation where we actually get before some of these committees that we haven't seen in years and say, "How's it going? What can we do? What are we missing?" And that came really apparent Wednesday night. It's apparent that a lot of their concerns I'd never heard before, I didn't know, that even some of their communications that I didn't know about. So I think it's important to connect back with some of these people, because, you know, they're putting their life into that, they're putting their heart and soul in a lot of the work that they do. December was extremely touching. On Sunday, a few of us were up at the mountain to honor, and Bob Reeves, one of our valued citizens who was involved with the Mount Hood Express, with our villages, C4, transportation issues, he was everywhere and did everything, and put his whole life into that. In December, we also lost Bob Traverso, who was a member of the Fair and Rodeo Board, and I went to that celebration of life as well. And it was very touching, and to see so many hundreds of people show up for these people to honor and respect them, because they gave so much back to the community. back to the community. And again, it's, it's, when I see people, like on Wednesday night, following, thinking about the celebration of life for both Bob Traverso and Bob Reeves, recent ones, and there's others been in past, but it really brings home that, you know, as you look around the room, and some of us are in our 50s and 60s and 70s, and, you know, you want to, I think a lot of those people want to see closure, and want to solve some of these problems in our community. So, you know, that's a little bit of the what, and a little bit of the why. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Tonight is the Milwaukee Cities Dinner. Commissioner Bernard has mentioned Milwaukee. We, it was great to hear, as was mentioned, the State of the Cities address yesterday at North Clackamas Chamber. I think that went real well. There was minimum county bashing, which is always good to hear. Friday, I'll be attending the Regional Disasters Preparedness Organizations Meeting, which we're planning for the big one, of course. And with limited funds, we're certainly hoping to do that regionally. As Tudy mentioned, AOC Legislative Day, it's a big day, and we'll be reviewing a lot of information and making important decisions. Next week, the Community Corrections Transition Center will be opening. We'll have a tour of that facility. It's across from the jail. And it's important, because there is a transitional period for people as they leave jail. And certainly, this will aid them in a lot of ways to that transition back to society. C4 is next week. We're all attending the Villages at Mount Hood Board Meeting, because something's happening up there, and we want to observe it firsthand and, and see what we can do to help them out. This last week, as Mr. Krupp mentioned, went up to Thurston County, and the sheriff was very kind to us up there, gave us a grand tour of their jail facility, which is outstanding. But doing, and the juvenile facility as well. And by the way, we got, Don took us to a place where they had tiny houses, a village of tiny houses. That was in an industrial area, which is kind of a good area, because, you know, they tell you the three elements of value in real estate are location, location, location. And although a lot of people believe in this kind of housing, most would not want it next to their house, because it affects their property value. But this is a perfect spot in a lot of ways, on a bus line. It was clean and orderly, and it looked good. I took some pictures, and I'll certainly have those available and give them to the county. Did a Camp Hope interview. Camp Hope was put together by the Clackamas Women's Services, supported by the county to, to a certain extent. But what a great opportunity for young people. If you haven't heard of the ACE score, which is Adverse Childhood Experience, you should. And you should probably take the thing. These are people with high scores, high, highest is 10, and down from there. But these are children with high ACE scores, which means that they have observed domestic violence, or that's been perpetrated upon them. And, you know, some with little hope. Without hope, we are gone. So I appreciate being interviewed for that. We had a Safe Place Charter meeting. Safe Place is, is growing in their delivery of services. And as Commissioner Bernard is involved, and went to that meeting as well. But we've got to account for that growth. There was a presentation to all the commissioners individually of a concept plan for Willamette Falls Water Park. This was a $40,000 grant from the Tourism Department, and he's done wonderful, Sam Dreebo has done wonderful work with that money. The, the concept is, you know, when Metro started working on the River Walk, that is going to be on the Blue Heron site in Oregon City, let's remember that that was supposed to be a sidewalk. That's all it is. It's a sidewalk. It started out at $30 million, and now they're over 60, with the expectation that would come from public coffers. I am, have been a big supporter of Willamette Falls and the River Walk to some degree. But it's probably time to close the wallet here pretty soon and come up with a different idea. It's a sidewalk, folks, a sidewalk for $60 million. Now, this idea is to incorporate the use of the water into the design there, which I think is a grand idea. And certainly, there are plenty of people locally who love whitewater, and this would create a bit of that, and give them a thoroughfare, a safe thoroughfare to go any time of the year. It was pointed out to us that, hey, in most of the country where they have these whitewater parks, they have to close them down, because they freeze. That won't be the case, of course, here in Oregon City. So it was a grand idea. I hope that gets some foothold. Again, we have the State of the Cities luncheon, or dinner tonight. The Law Enforcement Policy and Data Review Committee will be meeting. And we just had this morning, the 2015, like I say, County Legislative Agenda Breakfast, and I think that went really well. It was an, you know, an opportunity to talk to our legislators, see what they're proposing, and certainly to emphasize and voice the fact that we have our own agenda, and we would really like them to buy into that. The, probably the decision, the biggest decision we made this week was on radio replacement ballot language. Now, the C800 group has been, been talked about before, is a group put together of our emergency responders, who are using used parts and inadequate parts and outdated parts in order to conduct their business, which is our business. And any type of emergency call that comes in, you know, it's often said, every time the public is, is polled, public safety is number one. Well, if our public safety people can't communicate adequately, we're in trouble. Their ask is for 10 cents per thousand. So on an average home, we're talking about, again, $25 per year. Can I have that memo back? You know, I had mentioned before, the ask, again, this is from our, our lobbyists here. But again, Senator Courtney will be pushing for, and even though the governor said no transportation package this session, Senator Courtney is pushing, as last time, for what they call the Gang of H Proposal. But I emphasize this, we talk about $25 for C800, really, per year. And we've talked about $25 vehicle registration fee. Well, that pales in comparison to the figures that TriMed is trying to do. Again, they tried in 2010, got turned down by the public. So they're trying to go around the block and go through the legislature. And anybody who makes $34,000 a year, which I guess will be more of those, if they pass them a minimum wage, $63 a year they'll be paying to pay for somebody else's usage, usage of mass transit. That's, that's a pretty low income, $55,104 a year, and $115,217 a year. You know, every time they dip into this pot, it affects people's feelings about paying any additional taxes to a more local organization like this county. So I'm concerned about that, and we'll be following in that in the legislature. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the Clackamas County Commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.